Meeting with the flag salute.
Tom Collins.
Here.
Craig Pomassano.
Here.
Richard Patterson.
Here.
John Pitts.
Here.
Jim Gallantino. Margaret Guber Nolte. Stephen Giasecki.
Here.
Michael Ruffew. Andrew Campbell. Michael Richmond.
Here. Okay. This meeting is being held in accordance with New Jersey statute requirements of the Open Public Meanings Act sunshine law. Notice that this meeting has been advertised in the press and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that if you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form outlining the procedures for obtaining building permits and mercantile licenses. At the conclusion of your case tonight, please approach the board administrator to sign the provided information sheet. Okay, so first thing we're gonna do is approval of minutes for the meeting of.
I'll make a motion.
May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Secondly, is approval of decisions or resolutions. Alright, number twen- number twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four, one and nine south Argyle LLC. Number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four, Michael and Stephanie Scatellini. And number twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, Margate Burger LLC.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright. Our first case tonight is, oh.
Yeah, just, just a couple of announcements, a couple of changes to the agenda. The application of Janet McCarron, two fifteen North DeLavan Avenue, block four twenty-five, lot one forty. Is not gonna be heard tonight, that's gonna be postponed to July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Six thirty PM in this room, the applicant will not be required to renotice or readvertise. And then also the Miller application at sixteen South Thurlow Avenue, block one twenty-one, lot eighteen. That's also, if anyone's got a notice in the mail for that and is here, that's also gonna be carried to July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty PM in this room, the applicant will not be required to republish or renotice. So I don't want anyone to sit around and, just to find that out. So at least two, two matters on our agenda, and I can get Mr. McLaren sworn in. Mr. McLaren, please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you'll give throughout this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay. The first case is Keith Fane and Maria Lamenti? Fane, okay. Four oh six North DeLavan Avenue, block six zero four point zero three, lot sixteen, located in the S forty zoning district, seeking C variance relief for front setback building, front setback porch and potentially others in order to construct a new single-family house. Current on taxes, water and sewer payments, proof of advertising and notifications provided, represented by Kevin J. Dixon.
That would be me, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
Shall I proceed?
Sure.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm gonna.
I'll lead off.
Sorry. Real quick.
Yeah, Mr. Dixon, he'll do a, a quick overview and then we'll get you sworn in.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, the report is based on the, the application of Keith Fane and Maria Lamede Fane at four oh six North DeLavan Avenue, block six zero four point zero three, lot eighteen, S forty zoning district. FEMA zone AE elevation eight. Again, we have the option of the minimum floor elevation of eight plus three, or finish grade of nine feet off from grade to put parking below. Background is as follows, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the city in Margate in order to construct a new, single-family drilling that needs front yard setback relief for principal building and porch and setbacks. Deemed complete, and it's a hard C one and C two criteria must be met. Zoning chart is on page two, continued on page three, I just wanna go over a couple things real quick. The use is permitted. Minimum lot area of four thousand square feet is being met by the lot having forty-five hundred fifty square feet. Lot width is being met, fifty feet is required, seventy feet is proposed and existing. Lot depth is not a requirement, but it is sixty-five feet, so I just wanna point out that the lot is wider than it is deep. Continuing on page three is the continuation of the zoning chart. And all other requirements are being met besides the, other than the front yard setback to the house and the porch. Again, the documents reviewed on section two, on page four, plans reviewed, two plans, a, a survey and a variance plan prepared by Mr. Dixon. So the variances required as follows, front yard setback to the building, whereas prevailing front yard setback is twenty-four point nine feet. Fifteen point nine feet, nine one feet exists on a house that was now demoed, and twenty-four point five feet is proposed. Again, it's, they're seeking relief of four tenths of a foot. Front yard setback to the deck, whereas prevailing front yard setback is twenty point eight feet, and sixteen point five feet is proposed. Again, so the, the front yard setback to the deck is actually less than the front yard setback to the house that was prior there before. And all the non-conformities that existed in the house before are being eradicated and removed. So I, I really have no, nothing, substance to report to the board, other than this is a, another function of the prevailing front yard setback requirements, and here they are, so. Turn it over to Mr. Dixon.
Alright. Mr. Dixon, just give us your name and business address, and I'll get you sworn in.
Kevin Dixon, Dixon Associates, three one three Jimmy Leeds Road in Galloway Township, New Jersey.
Okay, please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
And you're an engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey?
Licensed since nineteen eighty-four, engineering nineteen eighty-six, planning, have performed numerous countless really, land development projects in, in and around the Atlanta County Cape May areas.
Satisfied to accept his credentials?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, professionals, administrator. Thank you for hearing us tonight, I, I am here to make a presentation of a variance request, as you heard from Mr. McLaren, for a front yard setback for principal structure, as well as front yard setback requirement, variance for, for the porch. Now, I have with me tonight the applicant, Keith Fane and his wife, Maria Lamede Fane. They are here as, along with some neighbors. Mr. Bustler is beside them, he is their builder, here to answer any questions. Please feel free to ask him any specifics, but I think what we have before you tonight is fairly straightforward. It is a, a variance under your ordinance requiring a front yard setback that is known as a prevailing front yard setback. And that is arrived at by, mathematically, by comparing the front setbacks to the properties within two hundred feet. And the spirit of that, it seems to me to be very reasonable in that it is intended to be, promote construction of a structure that is consistent with the neighborhood. Cause you're comparing the structure to the surrounding properties, and that, and you are trying to stay within that, that range of values. What we have with respect to the present situation is a home that has been demoed. The home was expansive in the sense that it was pushing the limits of, it was, had a number of existing non-conformities. And it also was dilapidated, and it was an eyesore, and really needed to come down. I think we may hear from some of the neighbors tonight, that they were, they were pleased to see it go. Apparently, there's a very nice gentleman living in there, but the house itself needed to go. And so if I could just run through that very quickly, and Mr. McLaren did his usual thorough job, I'm gonna try to be very concise, but very thorough in laying down the proofs for you tonight. The existing condition was a fifteen point seven foot front yard setback where twenty-four point nine was required. Both the proposed front yard, uh, front face of the dwelling unit, as well as front face of the porch, both exceed that setback, although we need relief for both of those. The existing condition with regard to the side yard setbacks was ten point eight feet and two feet on the side, whereas a total of twenty-two and ten feet is required. We meet that, we have a ten-foot setback on one side, and a twelve-foot setback on, on the other side, we meet the minimum on one side, and we have the, meet the minimum total for both sides. The rear yard setback, the requirement is thirteen feet. Previous structure was zero point nine feet off the rear property line. This proposes thirteen feet. Finally, building coverage, the previous property configuration was thirty-six, well, the requirement is thirty-two point two five. Previous property was thirty-six point seven, again, an existing non-conformity, and the, the proposal is for twenty-nine percent. Twenty-nine percent is interesting because what I've just laid out for you is a, a set of dimensions of this building, the proposed building, which actually meet the setbacks, they're, they're at the setbacks on the sides and in the rear. And so the only setback that is non-conforming in this proposal is the front. If you, if you built this building within the existing setback requirements, you could not meet the coverage requirement. We're at twenty-nine percent right now, we can't, we couldn't add enough building area to meet the coverage. In other words, if, we would be over the coverage requirement if, if we stay within the limits of the setbacks, we, we cannot even meet the coverage requirements. And that forms the basis for the argument, the first argument, and that's the C one argument. As you know, the C one variance is a hardship variance, the C two variance is a, what they call a flexible C, wherein we're gonna hopefully convince you that the benefits outweigh the detriments. So by way of orientation to the site, make sure you're picking me up on the, on the recording, the microphone.
Is the microphone working?
It's not working, the extra, that one works, the one right in front of you.
Okay. As you can see, the, this is the same plan, what I'm looking at right now is sheet one of one, called variance plan, lot sixteen, block six oh four point oh three. This is the same plan that was submitted to the board for your review, and you should have that plan right in front of you at the moment. What we show on that is, we thought, the best way to show that would be an aerial view, because the front setback is based on the prevailing setback. And as you can see visually, the setbacks for both the home and the porch are very consistent with the streets that are on the block. And there's no, it's not excessive reach for the non-conformity that's being proposed. And it's less than what was there before.
Please, I have a question.
Yeah.
On the drawing, you're, you're showing the porch at sixteen point five feet back, on the white, the white drawing there, right? Porch sixteen point five.
Yes.
Now, lot fifteen to the left, it's showing the house at twenty-five feet. So if the house is twenty-five feet back, that's showing the porch back further than the house, is that right?
That's a great question, we, we pulled that off the survey. This is, these are the survey numbers that were given to us by the surveyor when he surveyed. I do see that as well. And, and I don't know.
I was just looking at the schedule of all those setbacks of the houses, and your house there on that picture is out further than the porch at sixteen point five.
You're right, I see it.
Okay, alright.
And I, and I.
No answer for it?
I don't.
Okay.
But I do wanna point out that the, if you see, you can see it visually, that they are consistent, even, even a little bit, maybe even further back from the house.
I was just wondering if it was scaled right?
Our, our dimensions, we were very careful and double and triple check those dimensions, so we know that that's been plotted. But we have to work with the numbers of the survey. So, so where we are is that Mr. and Mrs. Fane would like to build this house next door to their daughter Jess, who lives at four oh eight North DeLavan. And Ms. Fane is, is here today and, and supportive of the application. So their goal is to build their retirement home, they're both retired, and would like to become residents of Margate. So to do so, they worked very diligently with their builder, modular company, and tried to fit an appropriate home for their lifestyle and their needs, it's a very modest home, very reasonable home. They will be parking under the home, so they will be able to meet the finished floor requirement, should they be fortunate enough to be approved this evening.
So you have no, you have no proposed drawings to show us, right?
For the house itself?
Yes.
We do not, I do not. No, we are, we are strictly.
Okay.
So problem you have is that when you come to this board, and you're saying, your first premise was that you wanna keep the neighborhood the same. But you're asking us to approve something, and we have no idea what you're putting in. You could put in a monster of a house that doesn't even fit the neighborhood. So you're basically saying, oh, well, let's just approve the land, but what do we approve? You're not really giving us a lot of information. And if I might, I know he's not sworn in yet, but I'd like to ask Michael Bustler a question, if you wanna.
Sure.
Alright, Mr. Bustler, just give us your name and address, please.
Michael Bustler, two oh nine North Harvard Avenue in Ventnor.
And Mr. Bustler, please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thanks.
Michael, just a quick question. And maybe I just got the answer already, but I was thinking this before. Has any attempt been made to eliminate the building variance for five tenths, or four tenths of a foot? I mean, you're talking about inches. I'm wondering, when he said it's a modular building, I'm wondering if that's restricting you, if that's the reason, or?
Well, the, the boxes are a certain width, and you know, there's two of them that, that go together, so that, that, I'm not sure.
But has anybody even looked at why, I mean, four tenths of a foot is nothing, then you, then you're down to just a front porch variance, which is not a.
You could do that, it sort of throws things off with the modular, you know, the modular boxes are, I'm gonna, third foot nine, I think.
We're good.
It kinda throws things off.
Thank you.
Am I gonna, Mike?
Mike, is it two stories or two and a half stories?
It's one story, and then there's a second story that's not as big as the, the first story, so.
And no third floor?
No, no, no third floor, no elevators, none of that, so. As I typically do these houses, I build the garage on grade, set the modular on top, so it's got a full one-story. The second story is a little bit smaller than the first story, and there is no third story.
How many bedrooms is there?
Uh, four bedrooms, two and a half, oh, three bedrooms, I'm sorry, three bedrooms.
And how many parking spots do you have?
There's two in the garage and two in front.
Okay. And is it, is the style gonna be more of like a, what are you gonna use for the exterior siding?
Vinyl.
Vinyl?
Actually, we do have some pictures.
There's a rendering?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll mark this.
It's a lot more important for us to see, you know, visual, I mean, we can read plans real easy, but we don't have plans to read, we're just looking at a survey.
I'll note the A one is the, the rendering, I guess we'll call it. I'll call that A one, your plan, that's part of the pack, and then I'll, then I'll call A two, this modular rendering that's being passed around.
Mr. Dixon, if, when he brought up that the house next door really isn't twenty-five feet, if that was, if that was correct, if the number was correct, would that alter your prevailing setback?
It would favorably, yes.
That's what I mean, I mean.
Yes, we, we, we're working.
You have twenty-five feet there, well, that's probably fifteen feet.
Rich, what are you, what are you saying?
The house next door, oh, the surveys, not his survey, but shows that it has a twenty-five foot setback. It's in front of there, sixteen foot setback, so it's really only about fifteen feet.
Right.
Well, that throws off the two hundred foot thing, which is.
Yeah, you can see it right on the, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, something's weird there, something's not right.
Well, something's not right, wait, I think.
Michael.
Right, right, that's what I mean.
Basically, this is above the parking.
Yeah.
That's the story and a half above the parking. Got it.
So what do you think about that?
Thank you, sir.
I mean, it's pretty obvious when you look at the picture.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I think that if you care of the three or four acres, the house next door, that's wrong, probably, they probably do need that house setback requirement. Well, you throw the high and low out. But they have twenty-five feet for the one next door, it's only fifteen feet. So that throws your whole average off. I mean, unless they threw the twenty-five out, if that was the height. Either way. All the, all the homes on that block are, are very consistent in the setback.
You know, getting back to what Tom said, and I, I, I agree with you. Is there, can, can everybody listen to me? But I, I think that, first of all, it's a small house. And I think that the rendering at least gives you a better idea what we're talking about. I mean, it's only, what is it, three bedrooms? You have four parking spots. It's back on DeLavan, you know, it's got the parking underneath. This is my opinion, I thi- I think that this rendering definitely helps, yeah, yeah.
May I say something to record the record, I said there was no elevator, there is an elevator in the house. But, yeah.
That's right.
I just wanted to make the record.
Everybody has an elevator.
I have just a few more proofs to lay down, sir, yes, if that's alright, shall I proceed?
Go ahead.
Just wanna go through the, the criteria, as Mr. McLaren indicated, the C one, the C two criteria. On the hardship, we wanted, we basically wanna say that by reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shape of a specific piece of property, this project would qualify for a hardship variance. As Mr. McLaren indicated, it's actually wider than it is deep. The house, as you had just seen, is a very reasonable, as I said, modest house, that is, fits right to the setbacks on the sides and the rear. And to, you know, it's basically porch or no porch at that point. Barely fits within the front yard setback, and then there would be no porch. I think the porch would be an attractive feature, obviously would be consistent with the neighborhood and attractive upgrade to what was there. What was there was a dilapidated house, what is there now is, is a vacant lot. So in either case, that would be good civic design, creative design that would enhance the neighborhood by bringing a, a new home into the neighborhood. So we have both the C one and the C two criteria there, the hardship and the benefits outweighing the, the detriments. I really don't see a detriment to building the home here. It's not as if this will be precedent setting, it's not as if it is inconsistent with the neighborhood. So I, I believe the C two, in my opinion, is, is, is met. I also wanna go through very quickly the purposes of the act that would be advanced. The neighbor, the purpose A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which, which will promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. As I just said, it's, the neighborhood's well-served by, by bringing in a, a new dwelling to, to fill in a vacant lot. To provide adequate light, air and open space is purpose C. The project obviously will reduce the non-conforming setbacks. It's certainly gonna be less light air and open space than a vacant lot. But when we combine that, the benefit of having a home that's, rather than a vacant lot, the home proposed is certainly an improvement over what was there before. And the, the demolition of that home was certainly a service to the neighbors, they were, as I've been told by them, they were pleased that it was removed. And also the pro- purpose E, promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities and regions, and preservation of the environment. Of course, the site is owned, it's appropriate, use is permitted, and it's appropriately located in this, in this region. So we believe the benefits currently outweigh any detriment, and that the project would advance the purposes of zoning. We wanna touch upon the, wanna touch upon the negative criteria, and we need to show that this variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, nor substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. I would point directly to the master plan, the master plan talks about the latest, two thousand sixteen, master plan update talks about the S forty district. The S forty district is, is identified in there specifically, and I would say that there are, there are no, no changes recommended to this district in that master plan. But the zoning in the master plan has a minimum setback of five feet. Now, the, the front yard setback. Now, we're dealing with a prevailing front yard setback, but we recognize that the zoning allows something as close to the property line as five feet. So I think it's safe to say that if the board were to grant this variance, it, it does fall within the, within the four corners of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Given the language of the ordinance and the reflection in the master plan, that they, they did not, that master plan update did not recommend changing that now. I understand it's intended to be changed in the near future, or whenever that may occur, but for that matter, it's not, it's not a matter of whether or not this particular application falls within the four corners of that, the zone plan and zoning ordinance, it clearly does. So with that in mind, I would, and, and with regard to the public good, I mean, the neighbors are in support, they're here, you're gonna hear from them. So typically, that is a criteria that you're looking for, noise, light pollution, litter, traffic, fumes, that kinda thing. And none of that is taking place, this is a single-family home, just like all the single-family homes on the lot, and the neighbors are welcoming it with open arms. So I would say that there's no detriment to the public good, it meets the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The benefits outweigh the detriments, and the hardship clearly exists based on the lot size and the, and the dimensions of the setbacks that are in the ordinance. And that's all I have, are any questions that the board has?
I've got a quick question, I, I think you stated already, but could you just reiterate that the drawing you have behind you there, it's drawn to scale, right?
It is, it is, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board? Anyone from the public like to speak?
Just, give us your name and address, and I won't make you raise your right hand.
Okay, very good. David McGinley at four oh seven North DeLavan.
Four oh seven.
So we're directly across the street.
David McGinley, Mr. McGinley, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Now, all we'd like to say is, we're looking forward to it, we're actually looking forward to having Keith Marie in the neighborhood, but as you guys stated earlier, the, the property across the street, I've been there twenty years, and I recognize the gentleman who lived there. Mr. Camp had, you know, was elderly and didn't have the means to really take care of the property properly. We, we did as much as we could to help him ourselves, but I recognize that it was in a state of disrepair, and it, it needed a lot of work. So after he had passed and they purchased the property, it, it was good that it was, it was taken down, so it wouldn't fall into any more disrepair or, or have issues in the neighborhood. And again, I, I also think that what they have proposed is, is really in line with the other properties in the neighborhood. It's not like small house, small house, monster house, you know, it's, it's gonna fit right in, I think the offsets are probably, as you said, I think almost every property along that street's fifteen, sixteen feet back with their porches, et cetera, so it's right in line. So I, we're actually looking forward to it, and I, I think it's gonna be a good addition to the, to the neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jessica Fane, four oh eight North DeLavan.
Alright, Ms. Fane, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Aye, thank you.
I'm pretty sure my parents would murder me if I didn't speak, since I asked them to move next door. Going off of what Dave said, the homes in the neighborhood, to include mine, mine, four oh, four oh four and four oh seven are actually all have a second story, so again, it would be right in line. It does seem that on our block, there are some more homes slowly popping up that are a little bit bigger than the original Cape Cod. But it is nice to see, so I, I think it would be really beneficial to have something there, other than what's currently there is a lot that I mow weekly. But, no, seriously, it would, it would be really nice to. But no, seriously, it would be really nice to have everything because if not, we're going high, low, high, low. It'd actually kind of blend everything together. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I didn't prepare anything, bud. Willie Jacobini, 403 North Delavan Avenue.
Raise your right hand.
Oops, sorry.
Jackie, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I swear. I do. I'm going on presumption that they're not going to overshadow the daughter's house right next door. They're going to be a great addition to the neighborhood, so I have no objections. That's all I got. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, public portion is closed. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. It's hiding behind the board.
I was before this board thirty-four years ago, was just by myself, nobody else.
What's your, what's your name, sir?
Ben Gottlieb, 401 Delavan. No objection.
Swear to tell the truth? Okay.
Oh, yes, no objection.
Thank you.
All for it, right? All for it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything else from the board?
Yeah, if there's nothing else, it's a C variance application. There's two variances. I'll summarize them, then we'll need a motion in a second. There's a front yard setback to the building. They're proposing twenty-four point five feet. And that average prevailing number they came to was twenty-four point nine feet. And then there's the front yard setback to the porch or the front deck, which is sixteen point five feet. Is proposed, and twenty point eight feet is the prevailing requirement. In terms of conditions, we'll just note the standard ones, anything in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed. Any outside approvals that may be necessary, and any representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing. Just the standard conditions we put in every resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Tom Collins.
After going through the presentation, I really don't feel that this meets a C1 hardship variance. However, I do feel that it does meet the C2. I think you're promoting a neighborhood pattern. I think you're improving the neighborhood. And you're going to have the best protected house on the, second best protected house on the block, not the first, second. So I vote in favor.
Michael Richmond.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the house on the lot, it just seems like it's a small house. It just, I know it's tight on the setbacks, but it doesn't look that way. You've got a twenty-four and a half foot setback to the house, and then you've got the small porch, which is only sixteen. But there's really a lot of space in the front, a lot of light and open air. You've got big setbacks on the side yard, thirteen feet. It is a little tight in the back, but it meets the requirement. And like I said, after seeing the rendering, I think it's a good project, and I'm going to vote for it.
Steven Jasecki.
I like the project. I think it meets everything, and I think that there's a, I think there's a flaw in some of this math that's up in that one corner. But it seems, you're building a, not a giant house in a small neighborhood. I think it's just perfect for it. I really like it. I think it's a good idea. So I approve.
John Pitts.
Yeah, really nothing to add based on what everyone else has said, so I approve.
Craig Palmisano.
Yeah, it's going to be a nice improvement to the neighborhood, and it'll fit right in with everybody there, and I approve.
Richard Patterson.
I agree with Chairman Richmond's comments. I approve.
The application is approved with six in favor and zero opposed.
Yeah, it's right here.
All right, our next case is Mark Rusk and Christie Reed Rusk, 312 North Lancaster Avenue, Block 513.01, Lot 15, located in the S-40 zoning district, seeking a C variance relief for shed size, height of accessory structure, lot landscaping, setback, potentially others in order to rebuild an existing shed. Current on taxes, water, and sewer payments, proof of advertising and notifications provided.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The report is basic. It's the application of Mark Rusk and Christie Reed Rusk, 312 North Lancaster Avenue, Block 513.01, Lot 15, located in the S-40 zoning district. So you can see variance is a hardship and substantial benefit, mainly substantial benefit. So there are four variances identified. One is accessory structure for the height, whereas the maximum permitted height is nine feet, and twelve feet is proposed. Also, the setback accessory structure, whereas the minimum side and rear yard setback is one feet and zero feet is proposed. One feet is required, one foot. Accessory structure for area, whereas the maximum permitted area for a shed is eighty square feet, and one hundred and twenty-eight square feet is proposed. Also, for landscape coverage, obviously, you have a larger shed than what was there before, landscape coverage goes down. So they need thirty-five percent, and the final will be around thirty point five percent. It, that's a round number. I am not sure of the exact number, but it is less than thirty-five percent. So that's, that's all my report.
Good evening. So this is.
You're Mr. Rusk?
I am.
Okay, I just got to get you sworn in. Just, you're Mark Rusk, 312 North Lancaster. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So gentlemen, this lot was non-conforming when we actually purchased it. From what I understand, from my neighbors that lived there a long time, the house that's directly behind it, 8506 Fremont, was actually part of that property, and someone at some point in life thought it'd be a great idea to destroy the garage that was really there and make two homes. So both those lots, unfortunately, are non-conforming. So it kind of is what it is. And then in our wisdom to make the shed better and increase it to, you know, put all the crap to your family in, I got a little resellist, hands down. It was the existing footing that were there, the six-by-sixes, I utilized those and took down the fence. But I was unaware that it had to be, the setback had to be there in the size requirement. But to be honest, when I did a simple Google search and wrote a script, there's about sixty-three percent of the sheds in Margate, including, or city Margate sheds, like the pickleball shed that they just put up, are all non-conforming. Now, I'm wrong. I know I'm wrong. But I believe it's in character with the rest of Margate. Now, the ordinance, I mean, I would suggest that the board recommend that the legislature look at the ordinance, and maybe the ordinance need to be increased a little bit or not. But a significant amount of Margate, that's what all the pictures on the back are. And I have pictures of the actual pickleball shed that was, you know, just put in recently. That also violates everything that I violate. We're not right. None of us are right. The ordinances are done for a reason. Mr. McLaren, I mean, I'm sure sits there for years to try to figure out what the right thing to do is. But maybe someone needs to revisit that. I believe the shed I have is in character. If being too close, my neighbor Patty's right behind me, she's going to tell you herself, it's too close. But I thought about the water problem. I added a six-inch gutter, and I think I realized what caused it. But if I, I think I have a plan to move the shed over. I believe I can get it over with the right piece of equipment. I've talked to some other people that would do it. And what even Patty mentioned was, why don't you put it in front of the driveway strips? Being a guy, I guess I didn't think about that or see that. It probably would have been aesthetically better. So moving it over, I believe can be accomplished. Jay, my neighbor, I have a letter from him. He would prefer that the back setback isn't moved because he kind of likes it holding all his rocks in and, you know, giving his space more privacy. I'm open to either way. If the board finds that, you know, approval of this works, that, listen, you've got to move it over. Definitely. It's not any kind of livable space on top you can possibly have. It just accommodates bicycles, surfboards, and anything else that, you know, I don't want stolen from our yard. If the board has any questions, I'd be more happy to try to respond to them.
So you're, do you have a survey?
I have a survey. The original survey of the property, I didn't get an updated survey because I got to tell you this. To put one of these packages together is kind of a, it's pretty unique. So I have the original survey, then I had a modified survey attached to it, but it's not stamped by a licensed surveyor. The house didn't move, gentlemen. The fence before didn't move. You can see in Mr. McLaren's last picture of the report that's put in, the structure literally is in the same place but moved forward. I used the existing, you know, six-by-sixes that were underneath on the original shed and took down the fence. Pooting it over, like I said, is possible. It's a little bit of a challenge, but it's not that, you know, nothing can not be done.
In regard to all the pictures you sent in, first of all, Margate, municipalities don't, aren't bound by the rules. So there's no, there's no difference.
Absolutely, but you would think the governor, governorship or the city would actually set the benchmark, sir.
The city's not subject to these rules. Second of all, I just looked through quickly, and some of those places have variances. The other ones aren't before the board, so I can't answer for them.
Absolutely. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm not wrong, sir, in any, in any way. It's built too big. I should have been smart enough to double-check all that stuff. But what I'm saying is it's within character of Margate.
I don't really agree with that, that it's a character with Margate. I mean, we, you know, some of those sheds could have existed before the new ordinance. Some of them, maybe they got variances for. Most sheds that I see, and I'm a builder, in Margate are eight by ten. So, you know, I don't.
And nine feet high. And nine feet tall.
And nine feet tall, right. So for starters, we, we don't even know what the overhang is actually going onto the other neighbor's property, correct?
It is not going onto.
With the gutter?
With the gutter is not. It's actually one inch off, off with the gutter, but.
Right. You would have to get that, you said you don't have an updated survey, right?
There's a pin when the gentleman bought the house behind me.
Right.
There's a pin when he surveyed the property.
Right.
Going off of that pin.
Okay.
It's invisible.
Right.
So I would go twelve inches off of that and, you know, snap a line, and that's where it would be.
Right. Except you need a survey to make sure it's correct.
Sir, I'd go thirteen inches.
Right.
I mean, a survey, there's errors in that too. But if I do, I mean, take measures, that pin is correct off of the other surveyor.
Did you build it yourself or did somebody build it for you?
It was friends that built it.
Okay. Was he a builder?
No. Well, he's there, you know, the carpenters or indoor handy.
Right. So they're not licensed contractors?
They are not licensed contractors. I don't believe, I don't believe so.
And at some point, there was a red sticker put on the building?
So this red sticker, sir, I've talked to different people. What I hear is, once you slap that sucker on, it doesn't come off. So when the gentleman came up to me, we were putting a lock on for the door. But that's the second, and I'm like, I'm putting a lock on. It's already built. What are my options? It's not like I was in the midst of buildings, said, you know what, forget about it. I'm not, I'm going to ignore you. What I've been told, when you put those stickers on, it takes a jack.
Not work. Stop works.
No, I understand, but I'm saying it takes a jackhammer to get off. I don't, I didn't see a sticker. It wasn't apparent anywhere in there where it said, "Don't." When the gentleman actually pulled up and stopped, we're putting a lock on.
If it took a jackhammer to get off, the city would be sued by everybody who gets a red sticker, so. You used a, you didn't use a licensed builder, you didn't get a permit, you didn't get the approvals, and you were told twice to stop work.
Sir, I don't, I didn't believe it's twice. It's only once. The gentleman pulled up, and we stopped at that point, and I went and did everything I was told to do, to execute.
We can only go by what the record shows. Twice.
So let me also show you that when you sent the order, or the send the citation, it was sent to the wrong name and the wrong address twice. Yet I received my tax bill, my water bill, fine.
But you should have taken the steps to do it the proper way. You can't say that because we didn't notify you the right way because you were doing it the wrong way, that we're at fault.
I'm not saying you're at fault. What I'm saying, sir, is there's errors. What I was saying is, there's errors, and there's no licensed builder that builds sheds you buy from Long, from Home Depot or from there. They're pre-built. They're not licensed in the state. They actually come from a lot of them.
So is yours prefab or was it built on-site?
It is not. It was built on-site.
Then you need a licensed builder.
Am I correct? I don't believe that's the case here in New Jersey. You're allowed to build your own home.
Not for less than two hundred square. Not for less than two hundred square feet.
Not for less than two hundred square feet.
Is there a garage on your property?
There's not. The garage was behind, when they made this non-conforming lot, they tore the garage down. If I had the garage, I wouldn't need a shed, sir.
So let's get back to, I don't understand. Are you saying that the shed, and this will be, this would be verified from a surveyor. Are you saying that the shed is twelve inches off the property line?
It is not. It can be moved to, right now with the overhang, it's a six-inch gutter. I got, I think, an inch, exactly an inch or maybe an inch and a sixteenth from where the pin is, in a laser level to measure that off.
Right. So the shed, so in, in order to be at least with it, in accordance with the setback, you've got to move the shed over.
I would have to move the shed over.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Right. Because right now, that gutter is actually protruding into your.
It's not. The gutter is prior. It's one inch prior.
All right, so, but the, but the building itself is less than twelve inches.
Building itself is absolutely less than twelve inches. It's, I believe, nine.
Nine, right. Okay. What'd you say the building is resting on?
Six by six.
Six by sixes.
Are they anchored?
No. They're, I don't believe so, that maybe the original ones were. We tied into them, and the shed, I contacted a shed mover, and that's how I, he's like, well, we can probably move it over. That's how I know we can possibly move it.
Anybody else from the board?
So.
Go ahead.
If he's successful tonight, you would have to get a permit based on the variances, including construction municipal permit. And you're going to be required to anchor that to the ground so it doesn't float away and.
Yeah, I should be able to do that. I mean, you find where the, you know, the cross numbers are, drill and put a rod in.
Right. Well, you will have to do that. That's.
No, no, I understand. I'm saying that's all possible. I believe it's possible.
Anything's possible.
Time and money, right, Mr. Richmond?
But it's also decreasing your landscape.
Sir, my house is fairly nicely landscaped, but it's already been a non-conforming lot from day one, that the city did. So I'm kind of like living within the bounds of that. I mean, a few more feet of grass, I mean, I have underwater drainage. I mean, I have underwater drainage everywhere, I haven't thought about the neighbor's drainage, you know, to take that into account. It's like, who puts gutters on a shed? All right, the person is worried about the property next to them, or water management, all right? So they recommended, and I'm like, yeah, okay. It was an additional cost, it was, you know, digging it underneath, putting a pipe, putting a pop-ups, and, you know, so it goes into the flower beds, it was all extra.
You mentioned earlier that, um, maybe we should reconsider about the landscape coverage, and actually.
No, no, sir, what I, what I was trying to tell you, reconsider about shed size, because it was, when I looked, I wrote a simple script that, we use Google Earth, there was a lot of them that were non-conforming. So it was like, okay, well, it's in within character of the, of the town, because they all, a lot of people have it that way. And it doesn't hurt anything, whether, that's an opinion, that doesn't mean it's not violating the ordinance in any way. I'm sorry, what's that word?
It encroaches. You say it doesn't hurt anybody while it encroaches on neighbors?
I meant the size, sir, not the.
Size, we're talking about.
No, the size, absolutely, well, the size, it encroaches.
Okay, anybody else from the board? Okay, we're gonna open it up to the public.
Do you want the letter from the neighbor, the other neighbor?
Yeah, the letter, you, you, you said what he said, I'm okay with that, but we can't accept any written comments, seriously. You can come up and state your name and address, and I'll just swear you in.
Good evening, Patricia Perry, and I live at three twelve North Lancaster, right next door.
Mr. Perry, please raise your right hand, you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So, I wanna keep an amicable relationship with my neighbor, but at the same time.
Excuse me?
Yes.
It says that he lives at three twelve North Lancaster.
No, I'm three ten.
Oh, you're three ten.
Oh, did I say three twelve, I'm sorry if I did.
Okay.
Three ten, I go live with him.
You don't live in.
No, three ten North Lancaster, yeah, directly, like, just south of.
All right.
So, um, it is a beautiful shed. I'm okay with the height, I'm okay with the rear setback, that's, doesn't affect me. But the side setback absolutely does, it does encroach in my property. The overhang does, it does overhang onto my property. I pointed out to Mark, and, and, you know, that's why we're here. We, we need to rectify that, and I'll be happy. He's got at least a foot and a half to go over towards his deck, he can move it over. And, and other than that, I'm fine with it. As for the survey, I was hoping to see a current survey. I have a survey with me from my property, um, and I know you guys have one on file, I raised it in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. So, I have that surveys there, um, but if you want mine, I can, um, and also, I took a picture of the pin, because the neighbor on, on Fremont bought. So I have a picture of the pin, and you can kinda see where it overhangs. And there's a couple, now it's nighttime, so it's not the greatest pictures. But there you can, there's another good picture, that you can see where the pin and the flag is, um.
It's close enough that we would have to have a survey. I mean, I, it looked to me like it was over, but it can't be, well, I think it's within an inch, it doesn't mean anything. It has to be by a licensed surveyor.
Yes, and I think if he moves it over to his deck, we're good, from my standpoint, okay?
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, public portion is closed. Uh, okay, so.
Wait, can I say one more thing? I'm sorry.
Sure. Hold the mic, hold the mic.
So, if there is electricity in there, obviously there's gonna be a permit to make sure that's safe and whatnot, right?
Right.
Good.
And Ms. Perry, if it meets the one foot, you want it to meet the one-foot side yard setback requirement, that's your.
Right.
Is that the building, or is it the gutter?
The wall.
It's the wall.
Wall, right.
And how, how close can the gutter get to the property?
It could be up to zero, so.
The gutter can be to zero?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. I just wanna confirm that her setback is three, according to the survey, is three point zero feet.
So anyway, um, for number one, the shed's gotta get moved. I mean, what, regard, you know, I don't, I don't know how we're gonna vote, but.
Well, I, I, I think a condition, if, if the board approves it, would be approving the height and the area, and the rear yard at a zero, what the condition would be, get a survey and show that it complies with the one-foot side yard setback. I, I, I assume that would, is what the board.
And get a per, and get a permit.
And get permits.
And anchored.
And anchored.
Well, that, the permit would be the anchor thing. So you'd have to get some type of engineer or something to, you know.
And a final survey.
Right.
Would you end the motion?
If we're ready, so.
Go ahead. One other comment is, there's a water meter, and Mark, I think, the last time I was out there, like, five years ago, that water meter that's in front of your house serves the house behind you.
Microphone, please.
So we're dating, and we're trying to figure out sprinkler stuff, and what I realize is, this thing is, it's really weird. It's, um, and like I said, it was non-conforming, the meter is there, and what I believe, what I thought was your sprinkler line, is actually their water line. It goes in, and I got pictures, it cuts a forty-five right after the parking strips, goes into your yard. I mean, I don't know what that is.
No, that's sprinkler line, that, that's like little pieces, that's not water line, that's little.
It's two inches.
Right, so what, what does that?
I'll show you a picture, I don't know what that could be.
I thought it served the house on Fremont. I believe it served the house on Fremont. The reason I'm bringing this up is, when you're anchoring, kinda makes sure you don't hit that water line.
Well, you gotta get a dick.
Right.
Right, they would lie out, yeah, one eight hundred.
You gotta get a dick, so, yeah, the one eight hundred number. I mean, I, I ran into a situation along Pembroke, and, and they had the, the house had the water meter on the corner, so it's, yeah. But anyway, um, so getting back to you and to the.
Yeah.
Did you say the setback to the house, their setback is only three feet?
Yes.
Do we wanna put, Roger, or the board, some sort of time parameters on this? I mean, we could put a condition, but then it's like.
Thirty days.
Thirty, thirty days.
You can wait a while and be, be heard.
Thirty days from the resolution.
Thirty days from the resolution.
That's, okay. All right, so the motion's gonna be a C variance application for the shed. It needs, uh, the size of it's, it's too high, twelve feet's, they're at twelve feet, nine feet's the maximum permitted. The area, it's about a hundred and twenty-eight square feet, eighty square feet's permitted. And then, in terms of the setbacks, one, one foot's required on the rear, they're at about zero, that's gonna stay. But the condition will be, and then the landscape coverage also, there, thirty-five percent's required to below that. Roger approximated about thirty and a half percent, I believe. And the condition's gonna be that the applicant's gonna have to get permits for the shed, anchor it, and move it over to comply with the side yard setback of one foot, confirmed by a survey, and do so within thirty days of adoption of the memorializing resolution if approved, which will be about sixty days from today. Third, sixty day, thirty days will adopt the resolution, which will give you thirty days to get the work done, if that makes, made sense. And then the standard conditions we put in every resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Tom Collins?
Saw a lot of pictures of Margate here, but most of them really don't pertain to what we're doing. I just think this was handled all wrong from the get-go, and I don't think any attempt was made to do it in the proper, right way. There's no reason that we should grant variances to cover the mistakes of somebody that should've known better. I just think this is wrong, I don't think it's good for the neighborhood, I don't think it's good for Margate, and I think it sets a precedent that we really don't want. So I, I have to vote no.
Michael Richmond?
Okay, so. I think I gotta agree with Tom. I mean, it's, it's gross, look, everybody makes mistakes, some of the builders, things happen here and there, but this is like way over what's allowed. And, and, you know, I, I, maybe when we have our, um, you know, what do you call it?
Reorg.
New master plan. We should, we should look into that a little bit, with, with, you know, the sheds, I mean, you know. But at this point, that's, that's the, the rule, that's the ordinance, so. I just wish that it would've been, you know, when, when, when the homeowner realized there was an issue, I wish that it would've been talked about before he just went ahead and finished it. So, I'm gonna vote no.
Stephen Giasecki?
Man, this one's tough. Yes, uh, it's been, it's been handled wrong. And, we can't continue, I have to agree with the other board members, I, I don't approve.
John Pitts?
Yeah, under the rules for approving a variance, it's fairly clear of the granting the request benefits only the owner, and it's not allowed, so, uh, I do not approve.
Craig Palmisano?
I agree with John, it benefits the owner only, and, um, too many mistakes were made. They went forward, either too fast or not careful enough. So I'm gonna agree with the other board members on this, and I'm gonna side with the code enforcement officer, I vote no.
Richard Patterson?
I agree with Mr. Collins, I vote no.
The application is denied with zero in favor and six opposed.
Can I make one more comment? So, it's summer, right, and this is not, like you said, it's fairly large.
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
So, like I said, it's summer, it's fairly large. To be fair to my neighbors, can you give me at least till September to, you know, or wait, let me start in September, so I don't ruin the block as I take this down?
We're not like an enforcement board, that's more in the discretion of the code enforcement, I believe, correct?
Because if I can't move it, you know, it's gotta be torn down, I have to bring in a dumpster and everything else. So it's a little, you know, it's just, it would be really crappy to rest my neighbors.
So you said number fifteenth? Is that fair?
Yeah, I think if I start in September, I mean, if things calm down, it's not crazy.
Roger's in the.
I think he's asking for.
No, the board does not have that jurisdiction.
Right, I think Rog.
But, for me, from the administrative part of it, we can work with you on that.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, got, right.
Just don't wanna, another herd of Red Stacks.
Right.
No. Anything else? I, yes, we, we did have our first get-together about the parking below and open it. Rich and Tom were there, I think we, we made a little bit of headway about how we're gonna address that, and we're gonna. Yes. We're throwing around, you know, percentages versus numbers versus location, and I think we have a start, so I have to draft something up and provide to the boards. In, in essence, that's what we pretty much decide on, to see how the numbers work out. So I'll have to compare all zoning zones to see what it would be. And again, keeping in mind that our building coverage requirements might be changing too. Instead of that sliding scale, which really gives an FAR of too high, in my opinion. Keep that down, and we can go from that.
What we're trying with the fifty percent is a guideline, and then Roger had to run some different sized lots and everything. But basically, the aim was fifty percent had to be open.
Right, and we're trying to get this, even if we make mistakes for now, because going to the master plan, at least get some basic, and so we stop the deluge of, which is what we talked about.
And by the time the master plan comes around in two years, we'll have an idea of what problems are being caused. But if we do it now, we have that time period to see what effect it has.
Right, good track record.
Do what now?
Fifty percent has to be open on the grounds, so we can't have.
But we're, we're gonna, we're gonna go, we're, we're gonna go over all this stuff, right, Roger?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Now, Mike, we're not.
Yeah, I'm not gonna come in one day. One meeting I miss.
That was the guideline, that's where, let's, let's shoot for this. But, but Roger was saying, different sized lots, different shaped lots and everything. He wanted to run some numbers and see what it looks like. So that's what, that's the goal of what we were looking for, it might not be that, but there'd be something similar to that, that's where we started.
So when Roger gets enough time to get all this information together, then we'll meet again, and then we'll make a presentation.
I mean, you see houses being advertised now, and the realtors are advertising living space on the ground.
Ground floor.
And they're showing bedrooms, they're all gestures and mirrors.
They're showing furnished, they're showing crown molding, and, yes.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, you know, I.
He built a few of them.
No, no, no. No, but, but what I'm saying is, and, you know, just so you know, Chris, I'm a builder, and when you build a house, or raise a house, if it, if, even if the house doesn't have the parking underneath, if it's above six feet, and Pominos this, you have to get a, you gotta go to the county, and you have to register, you have to sign this thing, and.
Non-conversion.
A non-conversion agreement, and it's not like, you know, you're just, I mean, it just gets registered with the county, it's a legal thing, okay?
And everybody ignores it.
Well, well, that's not, I mean, maybe in Margate, there's not enforcement, but there's enforcement in Longport.
It's once a year, I think, right?
Uh, I, I probably, yeah, well, I know for sure, because after we built a house recently in Longport, you know, this, they called me and they said, you know, can you get me, get a scene, because the homeowners weren't there. You know, so it, there is enforcement. So, yeah, I just be cur, I, you know, for one thing, I would think is that, how, like, let's say, how many feet do you need for a park, or twenty feet, right?
It should be, you know, ten by twenties ideal.
Right, so theoretically, that parking area shouldn't be any type of storage or anything anyway, you know, it should be parking.
But it's not.
Well, it's more incentive to use it for parking, it's, if it's open.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but, but is it fifty percent, or is it like, I, like you're saying, maybe it's a sliding scale, maybe if, um.
No, he said we're getting rid of sliding scales.
Fifty percent of the building?
Yeah.
Floor area.
Fifty percent of the floor area.